I call this meeting of the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code 551. This board will now adjourn into executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Open Meetings Act. We shall return. To our March meeting, and we will begin with our pledge from Florence Elementary, and we'll begin with Dr. Pinhala from Inspiration Church. There he is. If you will stand, please.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this time that we have to gather together, to lift up the needs of this community, the school district, the leaders that are gathered in this room this evening. God, it is because of your loving kindness and tender mercies that we have the privilege of coming to a Father God that cares to hear from his people. God, we are praying for those in leadership, that you give wisdom and discernment, understanding, to lead appropriately, so that we can have generations to come follow in an upright manner in which you have endowed us to be. God, we are praying for those that serve at the administration level, in faculty, teachers, and even for the students themselves, God, that you bestow your blessings upon them, the ability to learn, the enrichment that we receive when we experience and learn new things. God, I'm praying, Lord, for the students in this community, that they recognize that there is so much that they can achieve and accomplish if they give opportunity to those who have walked ahead of them, to teach them and show them the way. God, we are praying, Lord, for the city of Mesquite. We are praying, Lord, for your blessings to be bestowed upon this city. I pray, Lord, that this is a city that is a shining light to those around, that people look with curiosity and wonder, what is going on in that city? And I pray that they recognize it is because we lift you up in this city. Thank you, Lord, for hearing this prayer. We pray as we go through this time of discussion, give us wisdom and discernment to make those decisions that are right and appropriate for your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all, and to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas flag, must once again stay under God, one indivisible.
Would you please introduce yourselves?
My name is Jayden, and I am a fifth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is Jeremiah, and I'm a fifth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is Ashley. I'm a fourth grader in Florence Elementary.
My name is Tristan, and I'm a fourth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is Carnan, and I am a fourth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is Marion, and I'm a fifth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is Regina, and I'm a fourth grader at Florence Elementary.
My name is KJ, and I'm in third grade.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Now for our board moment. Is PTA here? I don't believe they are. Thank you. Yes. Dr. Rivera wanted to say something.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, everybody. I wanted to recognize the Leadership Mesquite Class for 2024. They're visiting us today. This is a group that has gone through a lot of activities in the city, understanding the opportunities of Mesquite. These are leaders currently representing various employers in the area. And so, please, Leadership Mesquite Class 2024, would you please stand and be recognized?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for visiting tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, yes. Mr. Rose?
And speaking of PTA, I know they may not be here tonight, but we all attended last week the PTA Founder's Day banquet that we go to every year. PTA is a great organization to be involved with your campus and with your students. And it's just, if you haven't joined PTA, it's never too late to join PTA, but they're a great organization. Get involved if you are not.
That's right. Thank you. Yes. Mr. Carbo, did you want to say anything about PTA banquet or our PTA program? Yeah.
Well, another to mention about that. This year, I missed it.
I know.
And I sit on that board.
I know.
On the council, but it's because I was in governance camp.
Yes.
Where I was really educating myself on things that some of them are required by the state. And Tia was there with me. It was a pretty good conference. We learned about several things. But again, IDEA came up and reminding us that the federal government promised in 1970 to fully fund 40% of the whole program. And a couple of years ago, they were only funding up to 17%. Things have changed. Now they're only funding 13%.
And IDEA is special education.
Special.
We get federal funds for special education programs, but they promised us huge.
Yeah.
Needless to say, it has not happened.
So we're still kind of hurting on that funding. There were some great programs. Gonzalez ISD has a program where the Superintendent Advisory Council, which Dr. Rivera has something similar to that, they collaborate with the campuses, and they do everything virtually in podcast or video. And it's the students who are doing that video, and they even ran us through it.
How?
You know, I'm not, I'm kind of old for this video stuff, understanding it. I usually have my kids or even now one of my grandkids, he knows more than I do. But it was very interesting, real easy to do. So I think it's something that I better start doing more often if I want to learn it. The important thing about the whole thing is that these students are the ones that are leading other grades, other grades in that school. So that was one thing. And then we had a couple of great speakers that really motivated us and told us things about talking about how important it is to have better communication with each other and talking across boundaries. So a lot of good things are going on. I'm sorry I missed the PTA banquet, because I always enjoy that one very much. But that was about what I did. I don't know if you want to mention it.
Another one of the things that we came out, at least I came out of it, was is how important the partnership between parents and your classroom is, that the parents are just as important in that classroom as your teacher and your other classmates. Got to listen to some better ways to work on that and to hear some success stories of getting parents plugged in and that whoever the parent is, if it's aunt, if it's uncle, if it's grandparent, getting plugged in that way, but also to let our students tell us who they're trying to be, rather than the other way around. We're not fitting them into a box, but we're tailoring our programs to meet who they are growing to be, to prepare them for the world that's coming, rather than the world that already was. It was magnificent. Also, I saw that our Mesquite students are rock stars. They may be low-key about it sometimes and be like, yeah, uh-huh, but they are rock stars. They are leading in ways that they don't even know yet. So I'm looking forward to highlighting some of that as we get going a little bit more. And our teachers are actually, some of the things that they talked about starting, our teachers are already doing it. And I was like, oh, wait, you know, as I'm writing my notes down, trying to be a good student while I'm there, I'm like, ah, we're doing it. Okay, checkmark. We're doing it. Checkmark. So making sure that we give props where they're due already, you know? And be like, yeah, you're doing the thing. You're doing it already. So that was it.
Very proud of our district. Yes, thank you. And I want to say what I sort of said to the people there from the city. It's such a partnership we have, and we are so proud of our partnership with the city and the Chamber of Commerce. We sort of all blend together to make Mesquite a great place to be, a destination. How's that? A destination where you want to be. So very proud of it. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it very much. Ms. Jobe, she disappeared. Do we know where she went? She's next. There she is.
Behind the door. Behind door number one.
Oh, yes, yeah. Spring break is next week. Yes.
I thought you wanted to cancel it.
No. No. Oh, my gosh, we'd be run out of town.
Ah, yeah. Retired people don't have that.
Regina?
Go ahead.
For Apple Corps?
Yeah, sure.
We're going to start by recognizing two of our newest members of the Apple Corps. And first, we have Stephanie Bella from Lawrence Elementary School, and here's a video to introduce her to you.
We're so happy that Ms. Bella has made it into the Apple Corps. Ms. Bella is truly deserving of the Apple Corps Award. She is a dedicated and passionate teacher who builds safe spaces for her students every day. One of the reasons that she is such a high-performing teacher is because of this and the relationships that she fosters with her students. They know that they are loved and cared for. This allows her to set high academic expectations for her students, which they always meet. She is such a valuable part of our Lawrence Elementary family. I can't think of anyone who deserves this recognition more than Ms. Bella.
Teachers wear many different hats, which make teachers very important. We get to help make the world a better place with each child and each family that we get to work with. These relationships are so impactful and last a lifetime. So every day, it's important to me that I show every child love, respect, and let them see me be one of their greatest cheerleaders in life. Teachers help foster children's curiosity, which helps them become lifelong learners and just good humans, which is ultimately our goal.
Okay. And it says, whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that the board officially welcomes Stephanie Bella into the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this fourth day of March 2024. Congratulations.
I want to start off by saying thank you to my Lawrence family. There's so many of them that pour endless hours of work and passion in all in the name of love and desire for our students and their success and their devotion to the community. Many of them are equally deserving of this high honor, and it's a true pleasure to know that they view me in that same light. So to them, I say thank you from the bottom of my heart. I would also like to thank my past, present, and future students and families. As we all know, teaching is not an easy role, but these kids are my why. It brings me true joy watching them grow, try new things, and ultimately embracing themselves and becoming who they're meant to be. I'm grateful to work for a district that recognizes the importance and hard work that teachers do for our community. High recognitions like this are reminders that the love, passion, and hard work that I do for my students and community every day is seen and appreciated at a higher level. So thank you to Mesquite ISD for seeing me and all these other great outstanding teachers and leaders. But last but not least, I want to acknowledge my family. With them by my side, everything is easier and much happier and joyful. I want to thank my two amazing children. Because of them, I approach teaching with a perspective as both a teacher and a parent. I'm raising and growing good people that the world would be proud of, both in the classroom and outside of it. I also want to thank my husband, who's my rock. Being the spouse of a teacher is no easy feat, but he is patient, accommodating, and always encourages me in my career. He's simply the best of the best. Unfortunately, my daughter and my husband, they could not be here tonight. My daughter is being honored at her school, and my husband's there supporting her. But however, tonight, I do have my son, Ryder. He's one of my biggest cheerleaders behind me.
How do you stand up?
Once again, thank you so much.
Is there anyone else you'd like to introduce? Anybody from? Yeah, your school family. Yeah. Yay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Our second honorary here inductee this evening is Mr. David Peacock from Frazier Middle Schools, and here's a video about him.
Mr. Peacock deserves the support because he is just loved by all his coworkers and students. He really is very vested in helping make sure students have opportunities for leadership. He really likes to look for students that he sees something in and give them opportunities to shine in a different way outside of the classroom. And so he's the perfect teacher to help explain things that went wrong and how to make corrections and how to do better. He's always positive, and every day is a first start for all of the students.
I think teaching is important because it's the basis of everything else that we do in society. That's what we do in school. We inspire people to greater things. We give them the tools they need to be successful. And I find that thrilling when I see students learning and their excitement, especially in science, which I love. They're excited about something that they were unaware of at the time, and then they're willing to explore more.
Mr. Peacock, it's my privilege to read this proclamation. Whereas the Mesquite Independent School District Board of Trustees seeks to honor outstanding classroom teachers who demonstrate leadership, innovation, and dedication to the students of Mesquite ISD, and whereas the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps consists of exceptional teachers nominated by their peers to receive the school district's highest recognition. Therefore, be it resolved that the board officially welcomes David Peacock in the Mesquite ISD Apple Corps on this fourth day of March 2024. Mr. Peacock, congratulations.
Please don't do that.
I brought my post-it note, so I'll be brief. First and foremost, I want to thank God for this opportunity to work with children and be a blessing to them, because they're such a blessing to me. I would also like to thank my family, who is in attendance here, my aunt and uncle and cousin, and my wife and my sister. I would like to thank past and present coworkers, because as you're well aware, none of this occurs in a vacuum. It takes others to support and to help, and I really appreciate what they do for me. I'm really representing all of Frazier Middle School, because without them, I wouldn't be up here. And that's pretty much it. Would you like me to introduce anybody?
Yes, yes, please. Introduce.
This is my wife, Sarah, and my sister, Beth.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Yes.
Each month, we also recognize one of our outstanding paraprofessional employees in the district, and this month is no exception. I'd like to invite Ms. Cassie Wilburn, Principal at Rutherford, to come forward and recognize her outstanding star para nominee this month.
All right. I'm super excited to introduce to the board Leonar Lamelli, who is one of our amazing bilingual paraprofessionals on our campus. She provides remediation and acceleration to our bilingual students in math and in science. Those are her areas of expertise. She is an integral part of, she's an integral part of our bilinguacy process. She ensures that our students have the knowledge, the academic vocabulary that they need in both languages to be successful in life. And her friendly smile and positive attitude greets our students every morning in the cafeteria, and they're the last smile that our students see in the afternoon when she takes them to dismissal. And Rutherford would not be the same without her. And it is my honor to present Leonar Lamelli.
Okay. Each month, we also like to recognize one of our community partners. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Office Depot to come forward, representatives from Office Depot. I believe we have a video about you as well.
This month, we are recognizing Office Depot as our featured Mesquite ISD community partner.
Since 2020, as a company, we've collected over $11 million. Trying to keep that gap close between those that don't have as much as some of those that have a lot.
One of the things I'm most proud of is we've been able to really give teachers some of those fun things that make instruction fun. We've been able to get smelling markers, the nice pens, dry erase boards. We've really been able to trick out a few of their classrooms with some of the things that they're forced to spend their own money on.
That is her teaching staff. And on the very first donation that we gave to that school, you talk about a shopping frenzy? I mean, these teachers were like sixth graders, just running through the store and shopping with, you know, free money, as they call it.
And the teachers have loved it. They get really excited, and even the kids get excited when I'm making the announcements about how much we received and what we're going to buy with it, because we don't want to keep it a secret. We've used our social media platform to thank Office Depot, and they have blessed us by giving back and rounding up to the tune of $12,000.
It's the everyday customer shopping in our stores that are giving those dollars that are needed.
Thank you, Office Depot, and especially Office Depot customers for supporting our staff and students at Berry Middle School. We're so grateful for your partnership.
Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Gilbert Prado to come forward, and also members of his departments, the Purchasing Department and the Finance Department. They've recently received two very special awards, and he is going to tell you a little bit about what they've done to get those awards.
Well, good evening. I'll make this quick. First, I want to introduce and please help me honor the Purchasing Department. They received the Taskwell Award of Merit for Purchasing Operations. And what this is, is recognizes Texas school districts, open enrollment charter schools, and education centers that are committed to following professional standards in the acquisition of goods and services. I will tell you that out of over 1,100 potential candidates, we are one of 777. So that is the Purchasing Department. We have plenty of awards. The second one is, do you want to take a picture with? I have two other awards before I do this. This one is the Excellence in Financial Management Award, and I will tell you, this is the first year that we've applied for it and we received it. And it recognizes school districts, again, the same, for best practices and innovations in financial reporting. The Mesquite ISD Finance Team has won one of only 32 that received this award, and this is a first for Mesquite, so please help me congratulate the team. And the last one is the Association of School Business Officials International ASWAL Award. That is the Meritorious Budget Award for the 2324 budget year. This award reflects Mesquite ISD's commitment to sound fiscal management and budgetary policies. And one last comment, none of this would have been possible, at least on the finance side, without me truly thanking Jennifer Ivy for keeping us on track. She's holding the big plaque over there. And without her help, we wouldn't have been able to achieve this award. So thank you very much.
All right. And now it's time to recognize our district winners for Teacher of the Year. Every year, MISD principals select a teacher to represent their campus as its Teacher of the Year. And of those 52 teachers, two are selected as the district's representatives for elementary and secondary teacher of the year. These teachers were honored at the Education Foundation Gala, where they were presented with $500 from the Dr. David Bruneland Endowment. Rebecca Smith, if you're here, we would like to recognize you. She is a teacher at McKenzie Elementary School and was selected as the Elementary District Teacher of the Year. And then Dr. Jeffrey Stone, who is a teacher at Woolley Middle School, was selected as the Secondary District Teacher of the Year. Is Dr. Stone here? Oh. Not able to make it this evening. These two teachers will go on to represent us at the regional level, so hopefully they will do well. All right. And we also, new this year, thanks to a generous partnership with the Clay Cooley Auto Group and the Education Foundation, district officials have chosen two principals to represent MISD as Elementary and Secondary Principals of the Year. These principals were honored at the Foundation Gala, where they were presented with $500 for personal use and $1,500 to use for their school. Unfortunately, our secondary principal of the year, TJ Reed from North Mesquite, was ill tonight and could not be here, but we will recognize him next month. I'm sure he'll be better by then. But Ashley Goodwin of Price Elementary School is here, and we would like to celebrate her as our Elementary Principal of the Year. And Ashley, would you like to say a few words? I believe that we were going to give you a minute.
Oh, yes. I'm sure. Oh, okay. All right. I just want to make sure.
Okay. All right, well, good evening. I would like to first thank the school board and Dr. Rivera for your leadership and support of this wonderful district in which I grew up in, so I appreciate all that you continue to do to make Mesquite Mesquite. I'm also joined by many others today, including family, friends, and coworkers who play a huge part in who I am and for whom I'm forever grateful for. My fellow principal Kelly Locke once told me, "Don't forget, we get to do this job." Those words have always, always stuck with me. So no matter how challenging things get, I always try to remember that I'm blessed because I get to positively impact the lives of students, staff, and families daily. I get to empower others to see their greatness. I get to advocate for my school community and ensure they receive the necessary resources. I get to create a culture where everyone feels valued and supported. I get to lead a group of individuals committed to each student's well-being, success, and academic excellence. I get to learn from others. I also get to celebrate the achievements of others and watch their growth develop over time. The best part is that God chose me to do this work, and I will forever be thankful for this opportunity. Thank you again for the recognition. It is a true honor. Okay, so I've got to recognize the people behind me. So I have my family, y'all want to stand up, my family, friends that are family because we've been friends since middle school, so my two boys are here with me, and I also have my Price family and all other friends and family that are here, Mr. Perkins, Dr. Plant, they've all played a huge part in making me who I am today. And then I cannot forget to recognize my husband, who is watching right now from the Philippines, so if I don't give him a shout out, I'll get a phone call or a text here pretty soon. So, so, yes, but he is watching from the Philippines, and again, like the teacher of the Apple Court, teacher said, I could not do this without him because there's, there's no way possible that you can do it if you don't have the support of your family. So again, I thank you.
Madam President, may I request a brief recess to kind of clear the room and get our next group of students in? Ms. Jobe? Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to start to recognize our students. If you can have your attention, please. We're going to begin with some of our district spelling bee winners, and first is Mr. Gabriel Martinez from Agnew Middle School, who won first place in the district spelling bee. And his sponsor is Parker Page. Next is Erin Dasafunjo from Vanston Middle School. He is runner-up in the district spelling bee. And his sponsor is Ms. Jackie Hernandez. Next, we have Athena Clark from Kimball Elementary School, first place in the district UIL, grades three and four, and ready writing, and her sponsor is Buffy Massey. Next, we have the DI Destination Imagination Team from Kimball Elementary School. We have Trinity Hubbard, Colton Reese, Cordelia Gemshetty, Isaac Lopez, Jacob Lopez, Juniper Blaylock, and Athena Clark. They earned second place in the Service Learning Challenge, advancing to the Lone Star Finals, and their sponsors are Buffy Massey and Lisa Hubbard. Next, we have Victoria Omosigo from Terry Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades five and six, ready writing. Next is Ms. Alexandra Pierce from Terry Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades seven and eight, ready writing. This is Ms. Aria Smith from Terry Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades seven and eight, maps, graphs, and charts. Next is Emerson King from Berry Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades five and six, maps, graphs, and charts. This is Naovy Navarro from Porter Middle, Porter Elementary School, first place in district UIL, grades two and three, chess puzzle, and her sponsor is Melina Ontiveras. Next is Jessica Calvillo from AC New Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades four and six, number sense, and her sponsor is Victoria Rogers. This is the Destination Imagination Team from Mackey Elementary School. We have Evie Mejia, Tyrese Samuels, Benny Soto Franco, True Williams, Cameron Green, Matias Martinez, and Sebastian Villa. From Mackey Elementary School, third place in service learning, and they are advancing to the Lone Star Finals. Their sponsors are Ashley Fields and Ivette Baldagas. From Tysinger Elementary School, this is Hannah McDonald, first place in the district UIL, grade two, music memory, and her sponsor is Ashley Goins from Tysinger. This is the Destination Imagination Team from Tysinger Elementary School, Natalia Martinez, Mason Craver, Sophia Pena, Noah Roses, and Giorgio Tovar, third place in the Technical Challenge, and they are advancing to Lone Star Finals, and their sponsors are Hillary Locke, David Samuels, and Gabrielle Diaz. All right, this is Haytham Zabin from Gray Elementary School, first place in district UIL, grades three and four, for music memory, and his sponsor is Julia Ward. Okay, and this is Roger Nahara from Gray Elementary School, first place in the district UIL, grades five and six, music memory, and his sponsor again is Julie Ward. This is James Gomez from Woolley Middle School, first place in district UIL, grades seven and eight, music memory. This is the Destination Imagination Team from Galloway Elementary School, Haley Toscano, Luna Geraldine, Johnny Bajo, Melanie Luna, Andrew Shanks, Ariel Dixon, and Jutavius Johnson, first place in the Service Learning Challenge, advancing to the Lone Star Finals, and their sponsor is. And their sponsor is Patricia McCarty. Okay. This is the Destination Imagination Team from Galloway, Ariam Ortega, Sophia Ortiz, Luz Valentine, or Valentina, excuse me, Hernandez, excuse me, let me do that again, Luz Valentine Hernandez, Arturo Castillo, Yezar Mora, and Braden Hernandez from Galloway, second place in the Scientific Challenge, and first place in Service Learning, and they are both, they are all advancing to the Lone Star Finals. All right, this next group is the Destination Imagination Team from Seaborn Elementary School. They are Stephanie Say, Juliana Ramirez, Andrea Para, and Camilo Ariaga. They earned second place in the Engineering Challenge, and they are advancing to the Lone Star Finals. Their sponsors are Elizabeth Munoz and Ashley Cook. This next group of students is the Destination Imagination Team from Seaborn Elementary School, Caleb Quillan, Luis Crespo, Aileen Ibarra, Sandra Torres, Leonardo Martinez, and they earned third place in the Engineering Challenge, advancing to the Lone Star Finals. Their sponsors are Ashley Cook and Karina Aguilar. Okay, y'all sit tight for this one because we've got a lot of students on this team. This is the Academic Decathlon Team from John Horn High School. We have Henry Lee, Leo Chavez, Janice Garcia-Valentin, Sarah Tedessi, Diego Rodriguez Castro, Ethan Knuckles, Will Burris, Maya Oriana, and DJ Gradic. They are earned second place in Super Quiz in our Advancing to State, and hold on, we have a few individual winners. Henry Lee earned silver in Essay and gold in Literature at Regionals. Sarah Tedess earned bronze in Social Science and silver in Essay at Regionals and silver in Interview at State. Will Burris earned bronze in Speech at Regionals, and Maya Oriana earned silver in Literature at Regionals and State. Did I say their names? Also like to recognize their sponsors, Amy Burris, Ashley Blakely, and Brittany Snyder for all their work. Next, from Mesquite High School, this is Gio Mattrell, fourth place in district Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. And sponsors are Brett Barnes and Desmond Ferris from Mesquite High School. Next is J.C. Beasley from Mesquite High School, third place at the District Wrestling Meet and a Regional Qualifier, and Brett is also her sponsor. Brett Barnes. Next is Zach Regal from Mesquite High School, fourth place at the District Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. Brett Barnes is also his sponsor. All right, moving on to swimming. This is Peyton Williams from Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 100 Breaststroke. Her sponsor is Dustin Holland. This is Troy Slater from Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200. 200 meter? IM, 200 IM. From John Horn High School, this is Khalil Hampton-Hollings, fourth place in the District Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. This is Darius Grignon from John Horn High School, second place at the District Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. This is Natalie Hernandez from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 100 Free, and 200 Free Relay. This is Sophia Razoo from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay and the 200 Free Relay. Next is Jasmine Ramirez from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay and the 200 Free Relay. This is Micah McQueen from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Free Relay. From John Horn High School, this is Eden Escavell from, from Horn, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay and the 200 Free Relay. Next is Christopher Hernandez from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Free Relay. Bryce Smith from John Horn High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Free Relay. Landry Cunningham from Potteed High School, third place at the District Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. Natalie Martinez, Potteed High School, third place at the District Wrestling Meet and Regional Qualifier. Katie Johnson from Potteed High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Free and the 500 Free. Armando Moreno from Potteed High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 100 Fly, 200 Free Relay, and the 100 Breaststroke. 100 Fly, 200 Free Relay, and the 100 Breaststroke. Christian Moreno from Potteed High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 200 Free, 500 Free, and 200 Free Relay. This is Jay Cardoso from Potteed High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 50 Free, 100 Breaststroke, and 200 Free Relay. And Billy Keltner from Potteed High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 100 Free, 200 Free Relay, and the 100 Backstroke. And this is Cara Van Heist from Potteed High School, State Qualifier in 1-Meter Diving. This is Kingston Barker, North Mesquite High School, third placed at District and Regionals Delilah Soto from North Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 200 IM, 200 Free Relay, and the 100 Backstroke. Michaela Banda, North Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 50 Free, 100 Fly, and 200 Free Relay. Rebecca Martinez from North Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 200 Free, and 200 Free Relay. Alyssa Yip from North Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Medley Relay, 100 Fly, and 200 Free Relay. Ariel Jimenez, West Mesquite High School, fourth place at the District Wrestling Meet Cleo Morales from West Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 IM and 100 Free. Julie Carden from West Mesquite High School, Regional Qualifier in the 200 Free and 100 In our last recognition of the evening, this is from West Mesquite High School. After submitting concept designs and a mock-up budget to Spark Dallas, the West Mesquite High School team, Snake Eyes, won $2,500 to design, create, and sculpt an immersive pop-up art installation room for the Prismatic exhibit at Spark Dallas that will open to the public June 1, 2024. Team Snake Eyes is comprised of seven West Mesquite High School ceramics, sculpture, and painting students in 10th through 12th grade.
Is that everything, Ms. Jobe? Okay. Now, we are ready for the Consent Agenda. This is an action item.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? Okay. Moved by Mr. Rose, the second by Mr. Carbo. Is there any discussion? If so, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Ms. Jobe, is there anyone to address this tonight?
Your man.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, reports of the superintendent. I believe it's an action item.
Yes, ma'am. We have an action item. We have a recommendation. I would prefer you entertain a...
A motion?
A motion, and so take it through.
Move to approve the Executive Director for Professional Learning.
Okay. Second by Mr. Seward. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Ms. Jobe, is there anyone to address this tonight?
Your man.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, reports of the superintendent. I believe it's an action item.
Yes, ma'am. We have an action item. We have a recommendation. I would prefer you entertain a...
A motion?
A motion, and so take it through.
Move to approve the Executive Director for Professional Learning.
Okay. Second by Mr. Seward. Okay. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, by the same sign. Motion carried.
Well, Madam President, so I would like to ask Dr. Andrea Hensley to go to lectern and present the candidate you just approved.
So, it's my pleasure to talk to you about Jennifer Morris, our new Executive Director of Professional Learning. Jennifer Morris completed her bachelor's degree in elementary education from East Texas Baptist University, and her master's in education and principal certification from Texas A&amp;M University Commerce. She has 23 years of experience in education, all of which have been here in Mesquite ISD. She has previously served as a teacher at Floyd Elementary and as a literacy specialist in our Teaching and Learning Department. She has also served as the Coordinator for Professional Learning and currently serves as the Director of Professional Learning for our district, Jennifer Morris.
Good evening. I just want to take a moment to thank the board, Dr. Rivera, Dr. Hensley, for this amazing opportunity. Words really cannot express how excited I am. My heart is about to burst because I can't believe I get to do this work. Like Ashley was saying, I'm just beyond excited, and I'm just, I can't tell you how excited I am. I'm honored to be following in the footsteps of two extraordinary professional learning leaders, which are Debbie Tanton and Dr. Karen Nix. They have both impacted me professionally and personally more than they will ever know, as they have so many others in this district, following in some pretty big footsteps there. I grew up with a mom who is also here. Mom, wave. I grew up with a mom who was the kind of teacher that inspired me to ultimately become a teacher too, and I'm married to one of the best teachers I've known. That's my husband. He's also one of the best humans I know. I'm so thankful for the front-row seat reminders I've had of the hard work, commitment, and impact that educators have on a daily basis. I am constantly blown away by the heart and commitment that I see every day in this district, in our educators, and in my colleagues that are committed to our students and our community. I look forward to continuing the incredible work of encouraging and supporting educators in our district through our Professional Learning Department. So excited to be a part of that team, and I'm excited about what the future holds for both our department and our district, and I just want to say thank you again for this incredible opportunity.
Yes, they are. Yes. And she will have such a wonderful support system, you know, for past people and current. So, congratulations. Yes. All right. Thank you. Our Effectiveness Report, sir. Advanced Academics and Dual-Credit CCMR. You've got a big one, Mr. Weeks.
Good evening. Thank you, School Board, Dr. Rivera, and the Cabinet, and of course, Dr. Hammett for allowing me the time to share some highlights from my department tonight. One of the cool things about the Advanced Academics team is we get to work a lot with people on the Cabinet, and I could not start without mentioning my team, Liz Rumler, who's here tonight, Advanced Academics Facilitator, Tyka Walters, Advanced Academics Facilitator, and Alicia Upton, CCMR Coordinator, who's been so instrumental in our goals for this year. So, the Advanced Academics umbrella is vast. It includes anything related to GT, CCMR, also many special programs and academic competitions many you saw represented tonight. In fact, I have to thank all of those teachers and academic coaches that help with so many of our programs. Our main objective is to challenge and enrich students' learning lives now and to help them thrive when they leave us and go on to that next thing in life, and we want to challenge all of our students academically so they're ready for what is next. So, one of our main goals this year has been CCMR and improving our college career military readiness opportunities for students, and it plays an integral role in accountability and even in some outcome bonuses, but the most important reason is because it gives our students opportunities and choice when they leave us. And I'm going really fast because there's so much to talk about. Our TSIA 2 scores this year have already increased three times where they were last year when you look at math and RLA categories, and will continue to grow these numbers into the summer with opportunities for improvement. We provided bootcamps, online support for students throughout the year, so we're looking forward to seeing those scores improve and providing our students more opportunities. Dallas Promise has been one of our greatest accomplishments this year. It gives MISD students the opportunity to attend partner colleges, some of which are Dallas College, A&amp;M University, Texas A&amp;M University, Commerce, UNT, UTA, and SMU, free, tuition-free. It also provides added resources as students persist through college. We, as you see on this chart, we are just about at our goal, so we're very proud of that. We have goals for PSAT. Our last year's cohort showed some growth. We have a long way to go here, and again, we are providing more resources embedding in the curriculum, partnering with our math and English coordinators to embed more practice in the curriculum. However, if you remember back in the fall, we honored over six, we honored 63 students who received national recognition for their PSAT scores, so we're very proud of those students. And SAT School Day is this Wednesday, and we're looking forward to see how our students do on the SAT. Our CTE department is incredible. If you'll notice on this chart, the increase this year over last year on earned certifications already, most of those will be earned in April and May, so we're gonna way outperform the goal for this year. So, thank you to our CTE department for their support of that growth for our students. FAFSA and TOFA, we have want to increase completion by 5%. The issue this year is some things with FAFSA have changed, and our students' FAFSA forms have not been reported to the colleges yet, so we're kind of in a holding pattern, waiting on that, but I can't go without saying how hard our campuses, our Advanced Academic Specialists, our Texas Advisors, and again, our CCMR Coordinator, Alicia Upton, they have had dozens of FAFSA nights. A few weeks ago, this room was full of families, and we were here supporting them and helping them fill out their FAFSA. We are starting earlier in college career and military readiness. We have future-focused lessons in K through 5. We utilize Zello, which is a college and career vendor that supports us, and we recognize that our students' college readiness begins in pre-K, and we're doing literature-based lessons, and we are so proud that we're growing that and adding to that library of resources for elementary schools. More on that to come. Our GT identification and engagement of families has been a goal for the past couple of years. We identified more students for this year, 109 more students for GT total K through 12 than we did in the previous year, so we're still identifying and serving more students. And the graph shows that our identification of GT students by race is more aligned by our enrollment than ever, which is super important that that aligns. We also have hosted nights for our parents with our Taste of Quest Night where they can come and actually participate in lessons that their children participate in at Quest, as well as our Instant Challenge Night where they come see our DI teams compete in instant challenges so they know firsthand what their students are doing. And our monthly newsletter that's going out to parents is averaging about 650 views a month, so we're really achieving that goal. Academic competitions kind of spoke for itself tonight. Coincidentally, we recognized our students in Academic Decathlon, UILA Plus Academics, which tripled in participation this year over last year. Our Spelling Bee DI, we have seven teams going to state this year than, which is more than we've ever had. On my watch, we're so proud of those students. The Academic Decathlon team that was represented tonight, they went to state and earned two medals out of the whole state of Texas, so we're so proud of that. And of course, UIL, one of our UIL teams at North Mesquite, Speech and Debate, has been working with our Elementary Quest students and working with them on debate and providing opportunities for them. We are here to provide opportunities that goes beyond the regular classroom even. We believe that every student deserves the opportunity to grow, to be pushed and challenged academically, and to find their niche. Every student's not an athlete, every student's not in fine arts, so we want to offer opportunities in academics for them as well, and we're so, so proud of that. In this video, I'm going to end with a very short video showcasing AP Capstone Seminar and Research and the Academic Decathlon team that went to state because it really fulfills that goal, that mission we have in Advanced Academics, providing learning opportunities for kids now that will benefit them for the rest of their lives, so I hope y'all enjoy this video.
First of all, AP Capstone is a two-year course. The first year is AP Seminar, and then AP Research is the second year, and AP Seminar builds to prepare the students for research.
The seminar part of this, they have less, a little bit less agency in choosing what they do, but it's the prep course for the research course where they get complete agency in choosing their research project.
One thing I enjoyed about being in the AP Capstone program was that I was able to venture off into writing.
I've noticed significant improvements with my writing.
It's benefited me because before I used to have a lot of like, social anxiety, and I couldn't really speak in a public environment, but it helped me a lot with that as I was able to learn how to project my voice, but also like, speak my mind.
I was really shy before I might take AP Capstone, but now I'm getting there. It's a work in progress, but AP Capstone helped me a lot.
I think it really improved my researching skills, and I use those a lot more in my other classes.
Because especially whenever you're going into your own field of study and you're doing your own research when you're in college, I believe that AP Capstone can help because it really gives you a taste of like, research in the future.
I like how we can also pick our own topic this year because last year in seminar, it was mostly group decided, and when we did have our individual essay, it was based on sources, so this year when we're allowed to pick our own topic, it's kind of nice because you can kind of go for whatever you want.
I did my research project on why having noneducators in the education system is either beneficial or harmful to both teachers and students. either beneficial or harmful to both teachers and students.
Right now, I'm actually working on a 3D-printed violin.
I did a project over the TikTok algorithm.
My topic was about social media's impact on career prospects of first-generation students.
I would say out of all my classes, this is my favorite class. Instead of just sitting there reading and doing math work, or English, or science, or anything like that, it's your own assignment you're kind of making.
This is year three for AP Seminar, and I've had one group that went through research and is now in college. And so, I had a former student who was in Ivy League school, and he says, "I'm the only one in my seminar classes at Yale saying, 'Nobody knows how to do this.'" And so, it just proves that no matter where you're gonna go, or no matter what you're gonna do in life, it's skills that are gonna take you further than, than the people who are not taking it.
Academic Decathlon is, as the name implies, a 10-event academic competition. So, in track and field, you have the decathlon that crowns the best all-around athlete. And so, Academic Decathlon is designed to give our students a very well-rounded education, make Renaissance men and women of them.
They have to learn social studies, they have to learn literature, they have to read a novel, art, and economics, and literature, and math, and music.
They have to read short stories and poetry, they have to study science.
And then, they write an essay, they give a prepared and an impromptu speech, and they give an interview for a panel of judges.
I've always been a competitive person my entire life, and I really enjoy showing off in a way. I like showing how smart I am, and I love reading, so it's very easy for me to get through these resource guides.
It's benefited me by really improving my work ethic. So, there's just so much information that you're kind of forced to be able to absorb a large amount of information at one time. And so, that's really helped me with other classes.
I was never really good at studying mainly because I was in Quest my whole life since the third grade, and I've always just known stuff. I never had to study. But with Academia, there's so much work to do, so it really helped me develop study habits that'll help a lot more in college.
This is the, probably the thing that I love the most about Academic Decathlon is that it doesn't just include the valedictorian, salutatorian, top 10%. We have kids that have terrible grades. We actually really love those kids. We call them the unmotivated smart kids.
We've had kids who have never really found their, their niche in school find a place here because they're with kids who love to learn, and sometimes that's hard.
And so, I, Sarah in the video is one of the ones who got second in state, and I really loved what she said that kind of encompassed our mission, giving students like her the chance to show off. But also, she talked about being challenged, and we want, we want every student in Mesquite to be able to, to feel that. So, thank y'all so much for letting me share. And does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. I want to make a statement. Working with kids so many years, it's not that you're gifted, but that you have a chance to do all of these wonderful things that makes you a super student. You watch it time after time with kids who are not athletic, kids who are this, and they find their, their passion. And thank you for all you do. I know how important these programs are.
You're welcome. Great video. Thank you.
Yeah, awesome. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, Mr. Morris, can you top that?
What do y'all want to talk about?
Let's do an audit report.
So, we are gonna, every week or every month, you hear me talk about our intruder detection audits, which are ongoing. I know Dr. Rivera receives the email from the, from Region 10 or the TEA that says that they are gonna be conducting audits. They are conducting audits this month. We do have a week off, so we might get a few less this month. We haven't, I don't know that we've had any since our last board meeting, but they have promised that, that all or most of our schools will get audited this year. So, that's where we are with that.
Okay, you're gonna give us an audit report, Sarah. How much did you focus on the audit?
I am. So, unlike Mr. Peacock, our Apple Core recipient, I don't have just a few sticky notes to go over, so I may, maybe a little bit longer, so bear with me. But I appreciate the opportunity to kind of share this potential project that we have as a district and, and a way to continue moving us forward. So, we're talking about open enrollment. And first thing to set the stage, what is open enrollment? When and what it isn't? So, open enrollment, as we're gonna talk about tonight, is providing an opportunity for families and students that live outside of Mesquite ISD's attendance boundaries to come to Mesquite ISD. What it is not, and we have, there's school districts in the state of Texas and some local even that have open enrollment, which is translated to mean they can go to any school, they declare at an early age, they can go to any school in the district. That is not what we're talking about tonight. And so, what we're talking about is specifically looking at opportunities for students from outside of the district to come to Mesquite ISD. It's also important to explain inter-district transfers versus intra-district transfers. And so, tonight with open enrollment, we're talking about inter-district transfers. And again, that is the process of folks from outside of the district coming entire district. Intra-district transfers is the process that we have internally for our own resident students to be able to transfer to other, other Mesquite ISD campuses, okay? So, again, we're gonna talk mainly about inter-district transfers tonight. So, it's, I think it's good to start with enrollment trends, and this is nothing new for y'all. Y'all have seen graphs similar to this. Basically, what it shows is that since 2007, we had a pretty steady increase in enrollment from 2007 until 2017. We peaked in 2017, just shy of 41,000 students in Mesquite ISD. And then have, you can see after 2017, there was a general decline. We're about, you know, a little more than 2,000 students less than our peak enrollment in 2017. What's important too is, is with declining enrollment, there is a potential for declining need in staff. There is a potential for a declining need in some of our programs. We may not be able to fill all of our programs with declining enrollment. And so, those are all, those are just a few examples of implications for declining enrollment. Since 2017, I think it's important to note, we've opened Fraser Middle School. We've, to help with feeder pattern alignment in West Mesquite, we've opened Henry, Cross, and Woolley to help with the growth that we anticipated in the southern portions of our district. And we've opened Vanguard to help with programmatic needs. Again, going back to, sometimes it's not practical to have every single program offered at every single school because you may not have the same interests. But when you bring all the kids to one place, then you can, you can fund those programs and make them happen. Ultimately, I don't know that there is a specific reason for our enrollment decline. There's a lot of different things that we've talked about, that you all have heard, that we've discussed. Aging demographic in the northern side of our, our city, our demographer says that the demographic in, in North Mesquite and Potteet's feeder pattern has aged out, so therefore fewer students live in the homes. That could be one of the reasons. There are, since 2017, a growing number of charter schools or access to charter schools within our boundaries and near our schools. And then obviously, you can see the greatest decline in this, these years that are up there are the first year of the school year. So, 2020, which is, you know, the first school year after COVID, was our greatest drop. And you can see we've kind of leveled out since then. So, COVID is one of the variables too that you have to consider when you look at declining enrollment. Ultimately, it's not one of those things. It's probably a combination of, of a lot of factors that, that come with that. Then, after that, let's talk about some exploration that we did. And so, at the beginning of this school year, sometime in the fall semester, I kind of started looking at local districts' policies outside of Mesquite ISD on their inter-district or out-of-district transfer policies. And while this is not an exhaustive list, I think it's important for y'all to, to see this picture, but the red triangles up there are Midlothian, Highland Park, Richardson, Frisco, Prosper, Allen, McKinney, Rockwall, and Mesquite. And those are the districts that I was able to found in this general area that do not have a, an open enrollment policy outside of their district employees. So, in Mesquite ISD, and we'll talk about our policy in just a second, but we do allow for inter-district transfers for our employees only, okay? Then, when you explore further, and again, this is not an exhaustive list, but the remainder of the districts I was able to research have a policy that allows for a process to accept students that live beyond their boundaries. As you can see from the slide, those districts are around us, or they're all around us. And through this exploration, you can quickly come to the conclusion that we can lose enrollment to neighboring districts. And maybe more importantly, we don't have a mechanism to gain enrollment from other districts as we currently sit. So, let's talk about those policies. And so, FDA, FDA Local is what drives our inter-district policy, the one we're talking about tonight. As you can see on there, a non-resident student shall not be permitted to attend district schools except as provided below, and that's where it has the caveat that our, our district employees can bring their students in. And you can see that's kindergarten through 12th grade, and there's a reason behind that. I think it's important for you all to know that it's not pre-K through 12th, but we have, there's qualifiers for our pre-K programs. And so, we want to reserve those for our resident, our resident families to be able to qualify. And the qualifiers for the state say you must go to the school that you're zoned for, the, the district that you're zoned in. And every district has that exact same policy and process. So, FDB is our intra-district transfer policy. It's important, I think, to note that here because we do have a process to allow for our resident families to apply for a transfer, and some are granted, some are not, and there's a variety of reasons that we do that. But we do have that process, and we have for years, and we have, we have several hundred students that, that, that do attend schools outside of their zone campus for a variety of reasons. One of the things that's important you can see at the bottom is transportation for all transfers, whether they're internal or external, is not provided for a few things. There's special education I mentioned there, but also with McKinney-Vento, students that qualify under McKinney-Vento can be transported as well. So, a potential policy, if we were to look at open enrollment, might look like this. The superintendent or designee may periodically designate a limited open enrollment period. A non-resident student in kindergarten through 12th grade, including the child of a non-resident district employee who would like to transfer into the district, shall file an application for transfer. So, that statement alone opens up our doors to students from outside of our school district. So, eligibility considerations, this is another part of this policy that, so this would be a little bit further down in the policy. But in approving these inter-district transfers, we'll look at several factors. The first thing that we look at is availability of space and instructional staff because that's gonna dictate, can we accept more people? If, if we don't have the staff to do it, then we can't obviously accept those. And availability of space, y'all know that we've, you all have done a lot of work with the Last Bond to get rid of portables as best we can. If we've got campuses with portables, there's likely not available space to, to, to have more, more kiddos come in. We'd look at academic performance potentially, we'd look at disciplinary history, we'd look at attendance records, and then we'd look and ensure that we're not limiting, I think this is a, a good bullet to have, that whether this transfer would limit educational opportunities for our resident kids, okay? And we're gonna talk about each one of those real quick. So, space and staff, staffing, if you look, and y'all have seen the demographers' reports over the years, but we are utilizing around 80% of the potential space or our, our capacity in our district. And that might seem like a lot, that might be pretty eye-opening, and, and part of that is because of declining enrollment, but really, a lot of this is by design. You heard me say after the Last Bond, we built those several schools that I mentioned earlier, and a lot of that's because of the anticipated gross, growth. And if you've driven down Cartwright lately and seen Solterra and the homes that are, that are, they're coming up over there around Gentry and across from Berry and towards Horn, this, this is why we built those campuses, and that's gonna continue to do that. So, when we look at the potential space, it's, you know, and it says on here, the utilization rates vary from 55% at Florence, and it's important to remember that Florence is our regional day school for the deaf. And so, that naturally has a lower ratio of students to teachers, and so, it's gonna seem, it's gonna look like the capacity has not met, but if you go visit Florence, those rooms are full, and we've got things going on, there's not more capacity. And then it varies, all, it goes all the way up to Terry Middle School, which two years ago was sitting at 120%. And with the cross rezoning, and we grandfathered some kids to be able to stay there, in a couple of years, they're gonna be below the 100% threshold. And so, there, it's one of the examples of the portables slowly going away and providing space for, for those campuses. We staff based, based upon programmatic needs, I kind of mentioned that a while ago, and anticipated enrollment on a campus-by-campus basis. And so, every year around this time, we are looking at rolling up our grade levels, so Kinder to first, first to second, second to third, all the way so on and so forth, to anticipate the staff that we need at each one of these campuses. And we're in the process of doing that. We work with personnel to make those, those decisions, and, and then we determine, basically is how we'll determine if there's space at our campuses. Let's see, the next step is in identifying campuses that have space. And so, here's some examples of how that might work. Let's say we have a fifth-grade class, we're gonna, we're gonna say it's at Candidate, okay? A fifth-grade class at Candidate, there's 92 students and four teachers. When you do the math, on average, you're gonna have about 23 kids in each one of those classes. That to us, in general, is a pretty full class. I think y'all would agree with that. We don't need, I mean, we can, we can go up higher than that, especially with a fifth-grade group, but ideally, we don't. And so, if we're looking at inter-district transfers and people that come in, they've got a fifth-grade student and they want to go to Candidate, that's likely not gonna be a place that we determine has the space and staffing to accommodate somebody from outside. One, let's say we approve two or three of those, and we get numbers up, now we've got resident students that move in around Candidate, and they may or may not be able to come in. We don't, we are gonna prioritize the people that live within our district first before we open up outside. Another example, let's say we've got a third-grade class at Porter. Can y'all tell I was in the Potteet feeder pattern? I'm using Potteet feeder pattern campuses. 54 students in two sections, so you do the math there, there's 27 kids per class. That's big. And personnel looks at these things, and they say, "You know what? I think they need an extra section in third grade. They've got a lot of kids there. If any more kids move into Porter, then we're gonna have some struggling teachers. That's a lot of kiddos." And so, we add a third section. Well, now, we've got three sections in third grade, and there's only 18 students in every section. In our opinion, that's not maximizing our staff, okay? There are, there are seats available in that room that we can, we can potentially maximize the staffing that we have. That would be a campus that when we get internal, or I'm sorry, inter-district transfers that for third grade, and they request Porter, let's say, we'll say, "You know what? They've got 18 per class, that's a place that we can do it." We might, we might approve one or two kids per class, so in this case, three sections, we might include or approve up to six kiddos to come to Porter. That still allows us for some growth for internal, more internal students, but it doesn't put us in a bind to where the teacher's got too many kids in their class. And then I think it's important to, to talk about Vanguard and some of our CTE academies and how we look at space for that. Obviously, with open enrollment, and you're getting kids that are applying that want to go to Vanguard, maybe they want to get in the Health Sciences pathway in Vanguard. If we, we, we go through our CTE program, they have the rubrics, kids internally apply in eighth grade, if we want our kids to fill those seats first, okay? The only way we would approve an, an outside-of-the-district transfer for Vanguard or any of our academies is if we aren't able to fill the seats with our own kiddos. So, let's say we do that. Now, with Health Sciences, we have 10 open seats. We've given every seat that we can to the kids in Mesquite ISD that want those seats. Now, we can potentially accept somebody from, from outside of the school district to join, join our, join our campuses. And so, those are different ways that we look at staffing. You could go all the way to special education, and we have specialized units in special education, and let's say we get a transfer from outside, if we have room in specialized units, we'll, we'll accept those transfers. If we don't have room in specialized units, then we don't have the instructional staff to be able to support it. So, there's a variety of things we're, we're looking at when we look at space and staffing. So, if you remember, there was three more things that were on that, on that slide, academics, attendance, and discipline. We feel like, and, and we've talked about limiting the opportunities for our kids, kids with poor attendance and poor behavior can, it can limit the experiences of our own, of our own kiddos. One, because it takes away from the teacher and it takes away from their instruction. So, we feel like it's important, and in looking at other districts, a lot of, a lot, other districts look at some of these same things. That was important to us. One of the ways we do that, so if, if a person submits their application, the process might look like they submit their application to come in, and we go through the Texas Records Exchange, we call it T-Rex, and we ask the, the district that they're coming from to send us their records with an intent to enroll, all right? They send us their records, which includes the five year, the last five years of discipline records, it includes attendance records, it includes their STAR scores and their grades, all of those things, all things that we would create a rubric and score kids on to, to be able to say, "Yes, we can accept that student," or, or, "No, we're not." able to say, yes, we can accept that student or, or no, we're not going to accept that student. Okay? I think that's it on that. And so let's talk, the last part of that policy that would be written is the power, how we would prioritize intra-district transfers. And so we would still prioritize as the first, the first thing that we would consider is, is it a district employee? So those would be the first. So that, as, as we get all of the applications from intra-district, intra-district, then we would look at these first. We'd pull all the district employees and ensure that they have the first seats available. Two, we'd look at students who are residents in the district this current school year or in the preceding school year that moved away. So an example, we've got a student at North Mesquite that moves to Garland, they're in 10th grade, they moved to Garland right about now, let's say right before spring break. They apply for an inter-district transfer, that is the number two priority. They've been in our school district for a long time, they just moved. We want to keep them with the coherent, with consistency. And they know North Mesquite, they want to be a part of there. We want to honor that if they apply and want to stay with us. Next would be students who are approved on inter-district transfers in the preceding school year. So these are kids that from outside that we approved, we wouldn't have any of these right now, because we don't have a, we don't have a mechanism for that, right? So we don't, we wouldn't approve any of these this first year. The fourth consideration would be siblings of anybody that was on a transfer. Again, we're not going to have any of those. And then the last would be all other students, a new enrollment. This is the first time application, they would be the last group. And if we, we have space, then we would continue to approve and/or deny based upon those preceding factors that we mentioned a second ago. So the potential process. If you didn't know, our, our intra-district transfer window has opened and it actually just closed. And our inter-district transfer window for employees has opened and closed as well. That's been open and we, we would do that at the beginning of the first semester. We, T-Rex records, we had potentially T-Rex records. If they're coming from outside, we'd look at those same qualifying factors and we'd approve or deny applications. At that point, we'd finalize campus staffing, which is what personnel is working on doing now. And then we'd open the non-employee inter-district transfer window. That would likely happen sometime after spring break, so in the near future. And there's a reason behind that. T-Rex requests, districts that get those requests have 10 school days to fulfill those requests and get them to us. If we wait too late in the school year, there's potential for people not working at the campuses that wouldn't be able to send us the records. We want it, we want those records early enough so that we can make those approval and denial decisions sooner. And then we'd approve and deny those remaining inter-district transfer applications based upon those, those priorities that I mentioned in that previous slide. And the last piece that we felt was important is, and then I saw this, so as I was looking through other districts' policies, there were several that said, our DOI has amended provisions in this policy or something to that nature. So I started digging into that. And what I found, and this is something that we've always, always done here in Mesquite, but anybody that's on a transfer is granted that transfer for the entire school year. There's no such thing as revoking a transfer. What Chapter 25 of the Texas Education Code says that once we approve that transfer, it's good for the entire year. However, many of the districts with open enrollment have a provision in their District of Innovation that reads under, there, there on the slide, you can see, "The superintendent designee may revoke the transfer of a student should the student exhibit disruptive behaviors that lead to classroom removals and/or fail to meet compulsory attendance requirements." So, you know, if we got into a place that we are allowing students from outside of our district, not our resident kids, to come to our schools and they violate any of those things, which were part of the considerations for approval in the first place, then we could revoke that transfer immediately if we wanted to. Okay? And so that, that would be something that we would add. And again, we talk about limiting educational opportunities for our own kids. If we allow students from outside of our district to come here and they do things that disrupt the learning environment, that is not something that we want for our own residents, resident students. And so we would potentially add this to our DOI so that we could revoke the transfer instead of keeping them through the rest of the year. So just a quick summary, obviously enrollment has decreased. We want to maximize our current staffing, you heard me say that. We want to maximize the open seats that are in our district. We want to continue to offer the great programs to our students and families that we have. We have unbelievable teachers that we want to retain and, and to, and if we can ensure growing enrollment, we can retain the great teachers that we have and continue to grow, grow our staff. We want to maintain, this is important with the integrity of the feeder pattern alignments. I didn't go into that a whole lot earlier, but there is, there is something about our feeder pattern and growing up knowing that you're going to be a pirate, a stallion, a skeeter, a jag, a wrangler. There's something about that. It's, there's something about our neighborhood schools and we want to honor that. We don't want to open enrollment like other districts to where you just pick and choose where you go. We, we've seen success stories from our kids that, that socially, that they grow up with kids and they stay with kids and they stay engaged. So that's nothing that we want to change. Again, there's a limited window to apply, didn't, didn't lean into this either, but this window to apply for inter-district transfers is open for a short time in mid to late spring. This is not something that's open year-round. So if a student calls us in, in, in October and says, hey, I want to come to Mesquite ISD, what we will tell them is our window for transfer applications is in late spring, so check back with us in March or April and you'll be able to apply to come to Mesquite ISD with, with an approval coming for the following school year, but not in the current school year. So there won't be a lot of coming and going at all through this. I like those, I'm, I'm glad I answered a question for y'all. And then transportation, again, will not be provided. We will not stress that, we will not limit the opportunities of our resident kids. And we're, we're potentially going to adjust the District of Innovation plan to accommodate for revoking transfers potentially. So moving forward, we're going to continue to explore this as an opportunity for our district in the coming month. We'll take your feedback tonight and any received, any feedback that we receive from families or our community in the coming weeks, based upon what we receive and what we find in our continued exploration, then we will potentially present a revised policy for the board next month and for you all to take action on in the April board meeting.
I think Dr. Rivera and I were talking about this and I, I'd like for you to share your thoughts of where this, in your, your mind, where this starts, like in the elementary world, and what we're trying to create to get people to come to our district.
Well, yes, Madam President. So ideally we want to, we know that if students come to us, the elementary school, number one, they get engulfed into our culture early, they build relationship with our staff, with other kids, and they stay throughout their educational journey all the way up. We don't foresee year one, if approved, at, at a later time, bringing a lot of kids. We want to get the process down. So as we keep investing in our early elementary programs, we'll be able to accomplish just that. Start, start them at the elementary and then move on. And as they go on through Mesquite, they're attached, they belong, they, they're part of us. And so you shouldn't be able to tell the difference between an inter-district transfer student and a kid that's actually living within our boundaries.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah. Go ahead.
So, so say a kid comes in, right? They have to reapply for their transfer every year?
So annually, and this goes for our current process for intra-district and inter-district employees. It's an application that would be filed every single year with us. And so that'll be a process, we have a process to notify. Right now, we notify our staff to say, this window is open, here's the application, complete this. And anybody that's on and approved transfer currently gets an email with the link, they, they fill those things out during the window and, and we're good to go. But it is an annual application.
Can I tag on to that for a second?
Yes, sir.
I'm just making an assumption that currently a lot of that is pencil-whipped or automatic. I don't know if that's true or not, but going forward, is there going to be a maintenance system with this? So when that person reapplies, the assurance that someone's actually going to go back and check those attendance records, check those discipline records? And then, because the question I had was, what, what do we do about a kid that comes in at fifth grade, they're great until they get to their sophomore in high school? And now they've taken the wrong path, are we still going to have the ability to send them back to where they came from?
You would, you would. Okay, so a couple of things. One, the process of when a student's here or when we get applications. So I'll tell you how we do that. I wish it was a little more automated, it's not, but it is looking at every single application one by one. That's what we currently do and that's what we've done for years in Mesquite ISD. But we look at every single one, we look at, is it a renewal? So is it somebody that's been here? And then we look at, is it brand new? So is it, would it be a new number? So they're not in our, our numbers currently that personnel has for staffing. Obviously the renewals are in our, are in our numbers, so it's a little bit easier to say, yes, those are approved. And also we ask our principals every single year, here's a list of your transfers and, let us know if anybody is not in good standing with attendance or discipline. And they let us know and they're, at that time, we deny that transfer for the coming year. So we do have a process for that currently. With the DOI, we would, we would potentially, it says we may, doesn't say we will or we could, or it says we may, let, we may revoke that transfer based upon discipline and attendance. So we, and, and we would look at those individually on a case-by-case and we would lean a lot on the principal to help make those decisions.
I think for those listening tonight, there's, there's some transparency in this in that you talk about declining attendance means declining programs, means declining dollars for the district as far as ADA is concerned, which takes us back full circle to where more students, more funding, more programs.
Absolutely.
But a transfer kid that doesn't show up doesn't do us any good. We know that.
It's a good point.
Yeah, that's the one, and it can be affected. Does your research show what grades are affected the most?
I can tell you what we would want to affect the most. I don't, I, I, my research does not. But a couple of things to Dr. Rivera's point a while ago. If we get students engaged early on and they stay with us, the proof is in the pudding, those kids are successful. You know, a lot of times we, sometimes we deal with discipline problems in our schools. And when you do some research and digging, there, a lot of times, there are students that are new to our schools. But predominantly, the kids that are with us from early on, so my vision would be to grow our elementary programs or to continue to grow those programs, the opportunities that Russ presented earlier with some of the advanced academics programs that we entice people to bring students early and they stay with us throughout the process. I do, I can see potentially early on being more of a secondary thing, but I don't know that. It'd be hard to, hard to tell you. That's something that I can look into in the next several weeks and bring back with me next month.
I'm just worried about kids coming from neighboring districts. Let me test what it's like in Mesquite and then next year, I don't want to be there anymore, I'm going to go back and stuff like that. And that's where we get affected by the water, like Mr. Rose was saying.
I think with something like that, you could do a one-and-done policy. If you came as a transfer and then left, we won't take your application again. I mean, that would be a no-brainer.
And that wasn't part of the plan, so.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we have that in mind, in the back of our minds when we're thinking about what we're really going to do.
You mentioned pre-K. So pre-K is tied to where you live by state law?
So, yeah, state law says, these are the qualifying factors that you can qualify for pre-K. It's mainly income-based. And the law says that you must attend the pre-K. If you're income-based and you're free pre-K, you must attend the pre-K in which you're zoned.
Okay.
And so yes, that's, that's the reason behind that. We do have tuition-based pre-K that, that some members of our community take, take advantage of. That we only open up and if all of our slots for our income-based free pre-K are not full.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a few questions. Has, do you know if the legislature has discussed a statewide open enrollment plan?
Actually, there was a proposed legislation this past session that said that all districts would have a way to do this, that actually would have amended Chapter 25 to do exactly what we're going to do to be able to revoke transfers based upon attendance and discipline. So the proposed language said a lot of the things that we would put into place, place here, but it did not get any legs, it did not go further than, than a proposal, it stopped there.
You had mentioned a scenario a while ago regarding Porter Elementary. Say if, if a student comes in at third grade, does he have to reapply for the following year?
So he would reapply.
And then once he reaches the fifth grade and completes that, would he automatically be considered going into Kimbrough?
So, so they would reapply every year. The thing about it, and if you remember, I just said something about new enrollment versus renewals.
Okay.
That student would be considered a renewal. And so when we're looking at our staffing projections, they are in the numbers already. So they would roll up. And so we know that that student, so yes, when he goes to Kimbrough, we know the numbers that are going to be at Kimbrough and that might impact what personnel does and says, okay, Kimbrough, you need an additional, an additional FTE based upon the numbers that are coming to you.
What are the UIL competition situations?
So potentially for varsity-level athletes, there is, there is a, a piece to that. So I wish Cody was here, I don't have him here, he's the expert in this. But essentially, if a student comes that doesn't live within our attendance zone and we approve that transfer, generally speaking, they would have to sit out a year of varsity athletics.
Have to play sub-varsity.
They would have to play sub-varsity for a school year. Now, that being said, once they've established residency in our district for one calendar year, they're good for participation even though they live outside of our attendance.
So that would only really apply to come when it came in a sophomore or junior level?
Or a really good freshman, yes.
A really good freshman.
Yeah.
Would, would there be an additional tuition charge for these out of, out of boundary locations?
Yeah, so in the research, there are some that have tuition that we, we discuss that internally and that's not an avenue or a lane we want to go down right now.
Wait.
We would not charge tuition for...
That's, yeah.
What about an application B?
Thank you.
Something that we can discuss. I know there are some...
Because there's going to be a lot of manpower and probably some added personnel maybe to come through with some of this. I just, that's just a projection in my mind.
I definitely don't want to get in the business of charging tuition.
So we'll check discipline records and things like that. What about academic records?
Yes, sir. That would be part of it. Different policies stipulated between what academic records means and some say specifically STAR. Some just say academic records, which could be just grade-level report card information and, and are they being successful or are they not being successful? That would be something that we would determine ahead of time, that what does that mean? It's not really, other than a couple of places that said STAR scores, it really doesn't outline exactly what that means for every district. So my guess is that they look at the whole gamut of things.
Is there rebuttal process? So what if we say no? And then Perry says, uh...
There's always, there's always a, a process to grieve any, any decision that we make. And so, yeah, there, there would be. And we, we, we go through that annually with our current process as well.
Have there been any area, districts that have adopted old, open enrollment and then reversed that decision?
I'm not aware of anybody that's reversed it. We do have some neighboring districts that, that have just done this within the last couple of years, to the point about how many students we're going to get early on. We've heard from a few and you're talking just a handful, maybe, maybe in the 50s, maybe in the 60s, maybe in the 70s. For us, this late, maybe in the couple of dozens. We, we don't know what that's going to look like. My vision would be 50 or 60, maybe more annually. And that's going to be a process. But when you look at that, 12 grades worth in 12 years, you're talking, you know, a couple, almost 1,000 kids that you're adding, that we're not adding additional staff necessarily because we're just filling the, maximizing the staff that we currently have.
Mr. Soye, you wanted to...
Yes, I assume that your area is going to handle this?
We are.
Are you going to be capable of handling this?
Absolutely. We've got a process down and, and we do feel like that it'll be kind of half and half. You know, we've got the, the employees' children and the intra-district that we work on first and then we would work on this. So it's seasonal, but it's, it's going to be a lift.
Well, the discussion and some of your information answered a lot of my questions. I had about five pages here. But I want to talk about safeguards. I'm sure you already addressed them, some of them are in here. I know you talked about the available space or caps. What about equity and equity audits?
So you're talking about demographics?
Yes.
Okay. And so, we haven't really discussed that. That would be good to look at, I think, especially as we move forward, because we are not looking at that essentially with the rubric, based upon how the policy says. What the policy would say is, we don't discriminate based upon race. You know, it's, it's in our policy now, ethnicity, or, or religion, or anything like that. And so, that, that would not even be a process. We wouldn't even consider the gender. We wouldn't consider any of those identifying factors for any of those things. So I do think it would be important to look at equity, through an equity lens, and ensure that, that, that we're completely transparent with that. But ultimately, it's not a deciding factor, because it can't...
I agree. And I, I'm talking about after the fact, because sometimes you won't know until you get that, to make sure we're not favoring inadvertently, favoring any one group or another.
For sure. We did talk about looking at all of our current transfers. So our district employees, what is our number at exactly? What is our number at exactly for intra-district transfers? And then being able to compare that annually, so that we know what impact this potentially would have if, if it moves forward.
And you know, you talked about coming up with the process and publicizing it. I just wanted to make sure it's transparent, and we have very clear communication
Yes, sir.
on the process itself, timing, everything, just so we move forward. Then I thought about an impact assessment, where you do a continuous monitoring and assessment of the program to ensure that it's operating as intended, and make adjustments as we need to. I'm sure that you've already got that built in.
Absolutely.
That I'm looking at as one of our safeguards in the process as we move forward.
Absolutely. And also, to that end, if you look at how the policy is written, it says, we may designate a limited open enrollment time period. So as you evaluate, maybe our schools are bursting at the seams at some point. And we say, you know, this year, it's not a great idea to, to have, so we don't open the period. Now, we would, we would do that for our renewals. We would likely open it up, so all the, the students that are currently with us would be renewed. But we may not open it up for brand new. So that's something that, yes, it would be evaluated annually.
That's all I had. I don't know if it's by design, but you're totally blocking the view of our attorney. Is he okay with all this?
It may have been intentional. I'm not sure.
I have, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
After you.
So we've created a legal way to do this, appropriate legal way to do it. Is there anything on the radar going forward to address those that are already here that are doing it wrong, and/or abusing McKinney-Vento, or something like that, to get in our district? Have we figured out a way to clean that out?
So, couple of things. You know, the McKinney-Vento provisions are...
I know, that's a sticky subject.
Sure, it's in law. And so, but I will say this, that we have come a long way this school year to ensure that there's not bouncing around at schools. And so, one of the things in the McKinney-Vento provisions is that you have a campus of residence, your original, I'm trying to think of how it's, your campus of origin is what it's called. And so, once you start, let's say I got a kid at Potteet that started with me, McKinney-Vento, and they decide, you know, I'm not, I'm not digging my, my math class, and I'm McKinney-Vento, so I want to go to North Mesquite now. That's not how that works, especially if you don't live in North Mesquite's attendance zone. We would be able to do that if you lived in North Mesquite's attendance zone. But if you were coming from outside, let's say you were, you were homeless, and you were living outside of our district, your campus of origin is where you're going to school, and you don't get to pick and choose. And so we've done a lot to cull that in, and ensure that we're transporting the kids that need to be transported, and that they're going to the campus that they're supposed to be going to. Tell me the first part of your question, though.
Talk about the ones that are lying about their address now, using a fake lease, or using, I know that those slip through the cracks. People do a good job of trying to catch that.
We do. There, and we, we train our people. It's, it's tough. We hold the line. I will tell you that. There are some times to where people go to TEA above us. And we have our set rules and guidelines that, that dictate how we make our parents and families prove residency. If they, I mean, they could lie, they could do, but we have people that do home visits. We have, we send mailers and get return mail. There are a lot of methods that we use to go through with those things. And when we find that somebody is not where they're supposed to be, then we typically, we might finish the quarter, and then they would go to their zone campus. If there's been attendance or discipline issues, our current policy says that if we know now that you live outside of the district, you don't, you don't get to say. So we can revoke those when we find those.
So, so Mr. Rose, currently, our principals and our campus staff takes care of this task. And so, I think they have a lot on their plates to chase kids around, see where they live, and all that. So if this, if this new practice does become an established practice for Mesquite ISD, I think, I think we would need to, and we, and we do get the students at it to make a significant impact on, on the budget, I think we do need to think about how we can relieve the campus personnel of this task, and assist, support them in a way that it's a little bit more efficient about other people going to do those things, so they don't have to. But it will, it will be contingent upon the number of students that we bring from the outside, because it has to, it has to add up.
Do you see any, like, I can't see how this could be really wrong right now. Do you see any big holes where it could?
Honestly, I feel like the DOI addresses my biggest concern, which was bringing in students that had never been in Mesquite ISD, that don't know our culture, that don't know our campuses, that don't have relationships with our kids, disrupting the environment for our, for our residential kids. The DOI statement answers that for me, which was my biggest concern. I also think that it's important for campuses to know that we're not, this is not a 365 days a year thing, that they don't have to sift through the applications as they come in, in October, and November, and January, that it's, it's done, and it's centralized with us. They don't have to be the deciding factor. And at ease with how we're going to determine if there's space or not, no space, as well. And we're not going to put our, our class sizes over an edge to where, to where we can't handle the kiddos. So those were the three big things for me, and I think we've addressed it potentially with some of the things I talked about tonight.
So if a campus is getting new kids, you're not anticipating, like, 30, 40?
No, ma'am.
But just a couple?
Thank you. Appreciate it very much. Yes. Excellent report. We'll be looking, yeah. We'll be looking forward to next month. How's that? Yeah. Okay, Mr. Poole, you're on.
See more money?
Yes.
Is that an action item?
Yes, sir.
Our last audience is leaving.
What? No, no. I paused, and he said, yes.
Good evening, Madam President, Dr. Rivera, School Board, here tonight to, for the GMP for Gentry Elementary. With me tonight, I've got Taylor Leach with Lee Lewis, Roland Gentry with WRA, Graham Bowman with WRA, and Jay Russell with MISD. WRA Architects, Lee Lewis Construction at MISD Construction Services recommend the approval of the Gentry Elementary Edition GMP II in the total amount of $10,000, $10,915,916, as submitted by Lee Lewis Construction, the construction manager at risk. This amount, combined with the previously approved GMP I of $854,418, brings the combined GMPs to a total of $11,770,334, with the total construction cost being $13,712,480.71 for Gentry Elementary Edition. The administration recommends the, to the Board of Trustees, to approve GMP II and the total costs for Gentry Elementary Edition.
So the difference between the $11 million and $13, is that your fee?
Not quite. No, that fee, you know, it's the, it's the architects, the allowances, contingencies, you know, everything like that. And that's on every job. And I don't get anything of it, except what you pay me.
Move to approve.
Yes. Is there a second? Mr. Sword and Mr. Carver is second. Mrs. Action Adam, is there any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
On the, on the, do we have an approximate price per square foot on this? Do you know right off the top of your head, Graham?
Eight hundred and something? It's eight hundred and sixty, right? Is it it?
Eight hundred and sixty-two.
Eight hundred and sixty?
Yes. It's on the sheet. I'm not going to be able to find it.
Yeah, it is. It's eight hundred and sixty.
Eight hundred and sixty-two.
Goddamn, fourteen, seventeen?
Ten fourteen. Thank you.
Two-minute answer. Are we peaking on construction costs, or is it going to go crazy still? I mean, I would never thought we'd land a contract right at $160, but I know we got to.
Yeah, I'm getting that right now. Sorry. The building itself is $609 a square foot.
Can you come up to the mic, ma'am?
Oh.
This is Taylor Leach with Lee Lewis.
Hello. It's $609 a square foot for the building itself, everything all in. So for the eleven, seven, seven, zero...
Seven forty.
No, it's seven forty. Seven forty twenty-seven. So, but it's the storm shelter. That's the most part.
Two-minute answer.
Well, the question, what does, we've seen astronomical increases in construction costs over the last six years. Do y'all see that continuing to rise, or is it going to, is it going to level off at some point?
Yeah, we, I mean, it's, it has leveled off. But, I mean, we're, we're seeing about a, like, six percent a year.
Six percent a year?
Six percent inflation.
Inflation.
So it's not going skyrocketing enough.
Yeah, we're seeing six percent right now for a year. Yes, yeah. It has leveled off in some areas, but yes, as of right now, around six percent a year.
Is there any other questions?
Storm shelters. Is that the expensive part? The really, really expensive part is the storm shelters?
Yeah, it's ICF, storm shelter, insulated concrete forms, so that's more expensive.
The whole addition is.
Yeah. Okay, this is Action Adam. We need to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Cool beans.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you. Yeah. All right. Facilities update with the 2018 bond facilities assessment needs.
Well, I get to introduce this awesome staff that just spoke to you. I mean, that's really my job, but...
He's so excited.
Yeah, I can tell.
No, I do want to recognize, I'm sure they're going to introduce the rest of the staff that's here, Jay and Scott, and the rest of the team from WRA. I did want to make a couple of comments, though, before I turn it over to Mr. Don Poole. Thank you for having us here tonight, Board, President Horsby, Dr. Rivera. I did want to just give a brief summary of where, where we're heading here, and you'll hear all the details in just a second. But we have practically maximized and squeezed every penny out of the previous bonds that our great citizens of Mesquite have approved in the past. So I want to just congratulate the citizens for allowing us to manage those funds, and the board for being, having that vision to always put our facilities and have the very best things for our kids where we can. I also want to indicate that you have leveraged very well some of the general operating funds, that you'll see some of the things that you have funded through the general operating funds. And we have done an awesome job doing so. As you heard earlier in my budget presentation, it's getting really, really tough. And then you'll hear from WRA, Mr. Graham, to let us know some of the facility needs that we still have out there. And so, again, I just wanted to kind of give you a summary of where we're at, what we've done, and where we're heading. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Don Poole.
Thank you. So tonight, for this, we do have Scott Owens, Graham Bowman, Roland Gentry, and Jay Russell. You know, in the event there's any questions that Graham and I can't answer, then we'll move to the back row, so.
Yeah, they're very far.
Hold him in the front row. Okay. So, so my portion, the facility update, is to go over what the 2018 bond covered, and how we spent the monies on that, as long, as well as the general fund projects that we did also. Oh, I have it. I was just waiting for it to go. So this, this sheet here is the 2018 bond. And those are all the projects that we, the lower portion is all the projects we have completed, and then the ones up top are the projects that are still under construction. And what you will notice is that the total amount for all the projects from the bond do exceed the amount of what the 2018 bond was. And that's basically because you have places, places like Horn High School Edition, which came out of the, the bond savings from the projects that were previously done, the clinic, you know. So we, we have a lot of that that add up to that $350 million that we've done, of which I believe about $300 million was our portion of it. Also, in the 2018 bond, we did a lot of athletic projects that came to eight million something, eight point five, eight point five million that we've done, that came from the 2018 bond. And then we, of course, have pitchers, there's Cross, Horn, AC New, which was in addition, plus the storm shelter, Woolly Middle School, McDonald Gymnasium, and some classrooms, Dr. David Bruneland Vanguard High School, Kennedy Elementary Edition, Agnew Middle School Gymnasium, Berry Middle School Gymnasium, both of which, all of those were storm shelters. Porter Elementary Edition, Vanston Middle School, Terry Middle School, more storm shelters. Kimbrough, Vanston, and Wilkinson, storm shelters and classrooms. So we had a lot, lot, lot of, lot of storm shelters that went in. Then on the general fund projects, our total there is $101 million of everything, and you can see the entire list of what we've got going right now, which is 35 million, of which, you know, the pool's part of it now. It's complete. But that's how much that we spent on the general fund projects. And then here's some of the admin building where we're at right now, Hamby Stadium Locker Room, the Hall of Honor, the Marquee Project, the pavilions, the Learning Center and Academy, Gentry Elementary Edition that we've just, we just poured the playground today, and should turn that over, of which, then we'll start the project in April. It's a girls' softball complex, Linda Sample Center, and the Aquatic Center. And with that, that pretty much takes care of what I spent from the 2018 bond. So now, Graham Bowman.
All right. Now, thank you, Don. I'll take it over from here. We'll talk a bit, a little bit about the general findings from the facility assessment we started in 2022. I will start with growth and capacity needs. These actual images are from the original facility assessment, so it kind of showed what the, what the trajectory was for growth and capacity needs. On the left, you'll see campuses set to, set to experience growth over practical capacity over the next 10 years. On the right side, you'll see campuses currently over capacity, and set to remain over practical capacity over the next 10 years. To add to the left column, if I were to update it to today's needs, Alk Zigger would be on there. They're going to see a significant growth pattern, and Price will experience the same thing, probably in five years or so, based on the 2023 Q4. That's what the latest fourth quarter 2023 projections show. And then if I move over to campuses currently over practical capacity, that list there includes Black, that's kind of, Black Elementary School is kind of even, kind of at a level of, just around the practical capacity. Smith is on a growth pattern. Thompson is currently experiencing overcapacity, but they will see decline. And then adding to that list would be Kimball and Perron, which is also, will experience some decline as well. Rehashing on some of the other general findings that we presented to you previously, TE updates from the November 2021, that will increase square footage capacity required per student, four square feet per student in the next set of classrooms that you build, which would result in 100 square foot per classroom minimum requirement in the addition. So previously, 700 square feet would meet the need for 25 students. Now, it'll be 800 square feet per student. A few other updates on labs as well. You're very familiar with a TEA security update, so just a reminder on that, things that will be needed on future facilities. Other general needs found in the facility assessment, we're aging facility needs, including any time we work on a new facility, whether it be an addition or just renovation, we want to touch on finishes and surface due to normal wear and tear, bringing compliance up to date for ADA and Texas accessibility standards, whether that's internal or external to the building, sidewalks, and playground equipment surfacing are included in that. And then every, every couple of years, we're adopting new codes. So the latest set, 2018, 2021, will include fire sprinklers, fire alarms, tornado shelters, obviously for all new facilities, also additions to existing facilities, and then any existing facilities that we're adding on to. We'll need to go back and address... need to go back and address some fire alarm and fire sprinkler needs in those facilities as well. There's also life cycle facility needs, replacement needs that worked with Scott Owens and his group on identifying a roof, roofing replacement cycle, obsolete electrical breakers, whether it's switchgear or panels within the building, that his group can no longer get new breakers for, rooftop and mechanical units on a typical replacement cycle, similar to water heaters, boilers, serving line, kitchen equipment, light fixtures. And then due to the facility assessment that we haven't done in previous years is the ATS transfer switches, which would allow for generators to be plugged in at any campus in the event of a power outage at a single campus. Talking about next steps, where do we go from here? We definitely want to sit down with MISD administration, review the needs that we've addressed here in the facility assessment, kind of the facts that are in hand, and then evaluate and prioritize each of those needs, and balance them between district-wide initiatives and community values and feedback. This will help establish the basis for the long-range facility plan. That is actually a requirement from TEA on their, our latest, that just provides a, a facility plan for every campus in the district. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rivera, if he wants to close us out on this.
Now that we've gotten the facility update, we've got the 2018 bond, we've gotten the general operating expenses that we, that Don Poole went over, and you got the requirements from, from Graham, what we're going to do now, we're going to prioritize. Now, I know we've shared with this board the facility assessment last year, because we've had it now over a year. So we need to prioritize. I know Graham went ahead and originally had prioritized one, two, three, and four. I went back last week, then looked at it. Since he prioritized, those priorities have changed, so we're going to do an internal prioritization process and look at our needs now in the district and say, okay, is this really a one, a two, a three, and a four? And then pretty much put everything that we need for the next five years in priority one and two. So the next thing you probably see from us is a report saying priority one and two projects that we need to do, along with the fixtures, some of the roofing, some of, I mean, even, even our locations that we have currently listed there. So that'll be our next step as we move forward with what our district needs to be, not, needs to do. But we know the cost of construction was discussed in the earlier presentation, and it's, it has not helped us at all. So we must really take a closer look at that. The secret's going to be in the prioritization in the next five years. And then from there, then we'll, at the end of those five years, we're going to have to go back and look at it again.
Questions on that, trustees? You know, we had a 2015 bond referendum, and then we didn't anticipate it at the time. We needed another one, so rather than waiting five years, we moved it up to 2018. So now it appears that this will carry us into 2025 if things are going according to what we're planning. So it shows how prudent the decision was to move that other bond referendum up in 2018 and go ahead and take care of it. Like Eddie said, we, we've constructed a lot of things in the last six years. And if construction costs then were like they are today, we never would have been able to accomplish what we did. Thank you. I don't understand why we've got a plumber back there that's got his suit and tie on, why he can't come to the front row.
Okay, Scott, I owe you a dollar.
Is there any other business, Ms. Jobe? Is there anything else that we need to do? Then we are officially done at 8:43.